We called the meeting and Liberty County Board of Commissioners to order. Mr. Brown has the meeting been probably advertised. I see some presses here. It's good you didn't want to help. Mr. Mosley is not with us today. Commissioner, could you lead us in press?
I can, yes sir.
Hey, we got.
Oops. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I thought you might want me to.
No, he thought she was part of the furniture.
Hey, I need more of an audience. I apologize, sir.
That's okay. Good evening to our Board of Commissioners and Happy New Year to each one of you. Let us look to the Lord on this evening. Our Father and our God, we're so thankful and so grateful for how you have blessed us to close out a year and begin a brand new one. And so as we move forward, we ask your blessings upon each one of our commissioners, upon our chairman, upon the staff, upon our county as a whole, that you will continue to lead and guide us and divinely protect us as only you can. Father, for the absent part of those who are here, we pray for their safe travels if they be traveling, that you would grant us all the opportunity to join together once again at your appointed time. Until then, we give you glory, we give you honor, we give you praise. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag for the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Flip gear.
Slip, slipping back.
How was that, Commissioner? We slipped. That was okay?
Yeah, you did good.
I'd say good evening to everybody again and Happy New Year to everybody again. Sometimes we, I didn't put anybody on the spot, but Commissioners like to extend New Year greetings. We would have received them. Let me, let me start and say Happy New Year to each of you and your families. To the citizens of Liberty County, Georgia, we look forward to a great year. Somebody said more than twenty-four. What is the slogan for this year? We look forward to a great year. In fact, we're thankful for the year we had in 2023. We were blessed to have a blessed year in 2023. And I tell audiences everywhere, sometimes we're so close to it, we don't appreciate it. But Commissioners, you and I very well know, when you go to other Commissioners, other areas, they are appreciative and they give Liberty County's accolades for where we are, how well we've progressed, really how well we collaborate. So we're thankful for that and we don't take that for granted. While I'm speaking, I know there's, I know the city of Savannah is here and that's where it is today, as well as the city of Riceboro and others out to follow. So to the new mayors, the mayor elects, and to the city council persons elect, we wish you well in your endeavors. We look forward to working with you. While you may represent your respective entities, we do know that at the end of the day, we're all working together for the citizens of Liberty County, Georgia. And none of us can do it by ourselves. As I look at Mr. Rickerson, I know that we own a campaign this year to renew our comprehensive plan. Those meetings will start shortly. That will require, and I encourage full county participation, especially from our city, city and county leaders that we participate in that, so that we ensure that Liberty County is planned out at best as we can for the future of the county. County is growing in leaps and bounds and we're thankful for that. Other communities don't have that. We just had dinner the other day at, I just say, a local restaurant and we asked how they were doing and they were saying Bishop Benton, they're one of the, I'll just put it this way, higher producing restaurants in the area. Bigger than the area really, and it's right here in Liberty County, Georgia. And we know that already stands for Chick-fil-A and for the Hobby-Lovers of the world, but this restaurant said they too were a leader when it comes to, they measured by visits. So we happen to have them in Heinzville, Liberty County, Georgia. So let us never, never forget our blessings and overlook our blessings. We find things to argue about or complain about and never say thank you for the things that we are blessed with. So as a community, let us be mindful, let us be thankful what God has blessed us with, and then let us be good stewards over it so that we will serve the best of our ability and help progress this county to even higher heights. So I'm, I'm just thankful and I'm thankful to serve. And I do, let me go ahead and say it. I do look forward, this is election year for me, so I do look forward to remaining, let's say, I do look forward to being, being your chairman of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners when their proper time comes. So I'll just go ahead and put that out. Some fuck have asked me, so it's no longer a secret. It's there. I, I enjoyed serving and I will enjoy serving and I certainly will serve at the, at the choice of the people. So thank you again for the opportunity. At this time, let's say, let me go to Commissioner Gillis and thank you more.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I too am grateful to serve on this board. I guess yesterday was the first, I, first of the new year. I started my sixteenth year on the commission. And like the chairman, this is an election year for me and, and I too, you know, have plans to seek my third term, my fourth term, fifth term. Yeah, it'd be my fifth.
Fifth time.
Next year. Okay, yeah. But, you know, this, this is a a task that I don't take lightly. You know, the people of Liberty County, especially in District Five, saw fit to elect me and I do the best that I can, you know, working with, with the members of this board. We, we all know each other and, and above all, you know, going to the same schools and growing up together and, and friends. You know, away from, away from this podium here. So, and you know, the work that we get, the hard work from Mr. Brown and Mr. Mosley and all the other constitutional officers and the department heads, it makes our job easier. Jeff and the work that the planning commissioner does to, to go out and beat the bushes and put on boots and do all the, all the legwork, all the legwork and bring it to us. And you know, of course, we have the final say, so we could vote it up or down. But it's very rare that, that that happens because of the confidence that we have. You know, we, we look out for the betterment of this county and that planning commissioner goes out and we got some stuff on the, on the agenda tonight. But you know, you can rest assured that the, the hard work has been done before it comes to us. And we will never be guilty of rubber stamping it. And we do have some discussions and there are some times where we do send some stuff back and, and may not totally agree with everything. But for the most part, the plan that we have for Liberty County is a great plan and we continue to work with everybody throughout this county. I mean, you know, we, we're all Liberty County proud. I attended an event yesterday, the Emancipation, you know, it's a rich in history. And you know, we had a packed house yesterday and you know, it was the great speaker. The committee put on a, a good program and you know, we, in a couple of weeks, you know, we'll be doing the same for the MLK celebration. So you know, Liberty County has a lot to look forward to. And you know, I like that saying, Mr. Chairman, more than twenty-four, because we, we will be doing more. This community is growing. Heinzville and all of Liberty County. And you know, we're just proud to be here and proud to serve. So again, I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year and, and we'll be here. If you need us, just give us a call. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gillis. Commissioner Threl.
Yes, sir. I appreciate the opportunity to serve in, in my district. Thank you. I'm, I'm on my bye year, so I appreciate it. I've been in office for twenty years and it's been a pleasure in working with the commissioners here. And all of our staff have been very good in, when we're working through the budget, which is where we as a board is trying to be very, enjoying the money that we spend that we've been entrusted with. And it's just been a good year.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you. Commissioner Stevens.
I was just wondering why you saved me for last.
You can bring it on in.
Okay. I just want to say to everyone here, those who are listening, Happy New Year. But I will say that this afternoon, God is a good God. He's a mighty good God. I have received blessing and strength from him to be the county commissioner for twenty-five years. Only missing a total of three meetings. God has been good. There's been days when I didn't feel like coming, but I was here. Because the people entrusted to me to represent them and I do it to the best of my ability. Like Commissioner Gillis say, you have to take this serious. If you don't have the time, don't bother. Don't get involved. I've, you know, I've seen taxpayers come up. Some of them, when they leave, they are satisfied. Some of them are not satisfied. But that's the name of the game. You can't split it. You have to vote one way or another. To this Board of Commissioners, it's one thing I'm glad, we don't always agree on the same thing. But at the end of the day, we are here for the people and it makes a difference. So if we all had to always agree, we only need one person up here. But we come up with different ideas on how to do things. I can say that over the years, I've seen improvement in Liberty County, even in my district, we paved roads. We've built two fire stations down that way and we're building on the, the major headquarters down at the Miller Park. And we've gone from volunteers to pretty well full-time, but we still have some volunteers that we still need. This is providing better quality service for the citizens and for those who pass through Liberty County. And we've also looked at the Sam Harris Gym that we just cut the ribbon on the other day. A renovation of a project that I didn't know what it was going to look like. Thanks to Mr. Brown and his staff and the recreation staff. And also we did the revitalization of the Miller Park. We still got work to do, was one thing. We must learn that this, we must stay ahead of the growth as much as possible. We can't come back and do infrastructure once something is already built on top of it. Jeff, you got your hand full and I think it's going to get full. I can see it coming. Industries is coming to Liberty County. We can sit back here and say, we don't want it, it's here. So a couple of things I'd like for us to look at in twenty-four. One of them is the building fee, which and I think we already start shifting gears on that. The other one, biggest one, is blight. And blight is just ugly scenes that does, is not wanted in Liberty County. We need to clean it up. I know it's a tough subject to look at sometime and make changes, but you ride by certain places, it needs to be cleaned up. So we must take a different approach at that. And there's some other things, but also most of all, we must continue to look out for our employees who makes us look good. Thank you.
Thank you all. Appreciate you. Let me echo the sentiments of each of you. We certainly appreciate our staff. It does a tremendous job for us in leadership. We wouldn't trade you for nothing in the world. You make our work easy. You make our work easy and we appreciate that. That's just that as well as we talked about LCPC staff and other boards we have to, obviously we have to work with. We appreciate the relationship. And I do think we do a good job. But while we're talking, Bishop Benton, don't y'all stop praying for us. Don't y'all stop praying for us. Thanks, sir. All right, approval of minutes for December.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the minute as they were presented.
Second.
Second, approve the December fifth and twenty-first meeting minutes. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. All right, minutes are approved. Business speaking of LCPC, Mr. Rickerson, Happy New Year to you, sir.
Happy New Year to you.
Good to see you.
Good evening, Chairman Lovett, members of the board. Thank you for your kind remarks and your confidence. Tonight, we have one request for you. This is a request for a type B home occupation. The applicant is Ms. Asia Smith and she's looking for a commissary or a base of operations to, to run her food truck. As y'all know, in order to get a health department permit for a food truck, you got to have a commissary. They would like to do this at their residence on Trade Hill Road, three oh one Trade Hill Road. And this is allowed as a type B home occupation, so that's why we're here tonight. Next slide here, we've got proof of our ad that we ran in the Coastal Courier. You see the sign in the front yard and this is the Smith home in the backdrop there. Located on Trade Hill Road. Trade Hill is a rural collector road. You see Islands Highway here and then Fort Morris Road here. They're sort of halfway between Islands Highway and where it ties back into Fort Morris Road and sort of in between the two speed humps up there. And you can see here the zoning map. This area is zone AR1, which is agricultural residential use. And you can see the wetland map here. The back portion of their property is, is in wetlands, but the area where their house is and the area where the outbuildings are, they want to do the commissary is all in uplands. This is their narrative. It was pretty, pretty short and sweet. They're wanting to apply for the home, type B home occupation to accommodate their food truck business. They'd like to serve country-style food with quality love and a feeling of good home cooking like grandma did. This is their proposed building location. This is a house I just showed you on the first slide there. And then the, the existing outbuildings are in the back. They want to put the commissary in one of the existing outbuildings, so there won't be any new buildings there. But that's something that, again, as I said, you got to have that in order to get a health department permit for a food truck. And I just kind of go over your conditions for the type B home occupation. Home occupations, type B home occupations are allowed in the unincorporated area of Liberty County, especially in this AR1 area that this, this house is located in. Number two, home occupations have to meet the following additional requirements. You can't have any more than one non-resident employee. I don't think currently they're planning on having any non-resident employees. Number two, customers may come to the business on an infrequent basis during the daytime hours, but not more than one or two at a time. And number three, retail sales of goods may only be incidental to the home occupation. I think in this case, all of their businesses will be transacted in their, in a remote location as part of food truck festivals or other places that they might be operating the food truck. So LCPC heard this at last month's meeting and they recommend approval with standard conditions. And the, this, this has been advertised as a public hearing and the applicants are here if you have any questions with them.
So Ms. Asia Smith is the applicant?
Yes, sir.
Will you mind coming to the podium, stating your name for the matter of record and just give us your sentence on what you're trying to do here, Ms. Asia? Name?
My name is Asia Smith. Good evening, Liberty County Board of Commissions.
Good evening.
Well, basically, I started with a dream. Growing up, everything was surrounded by food, good food, family. And even though a lot of family grow apart through moving or whatever, you don't seem to have that big community of family like we used to have. But you have the memories every time you eat certain foods, foods that we grew up on. Brings back memories of childhood from my age of fifty to your ages. You may find some food that just brings back that memory, sweetness, love, community, family. And I want to bring that back. I was raised by my grandmother. I learned how to cook by my grandmother. I have a mother-in-law that's an awesome cook, a bunch of in-laws that awesome cooks. And they believe in me. I believe in me. I know what I can bring. Midway doesn't have that much of choices with food than good food, home-cooked food. Some people work a lot. They only have a half an hour of lunch, if that, or just working tired and want to just grab something and they don't want a burger. They want some other turkey wings, homemade cornbread. Green bean casserole. You know, just things that you would get at home. And I want to bring that. I can bring that. Also an awesome bake, you know, Sock It To Me cake. I want to bring that to Midway, into every fair that I'm able to go to. That quality of good food. Real cheese, macaroni and cheese. You know, just the foods that bring back a lot of memories and a lot of love. Some businesses, you know, they forget about that. That's what I live for. It's what I have, my memories and the memories of my families and friends, of times that are gone, but through food, just like your staff.
What's the name of your business?
Mr. Frank's Table.
Mr. Frank's Table. When, when you speak about those little dishes and I won't do this now, but you say grandmother raises, so your family is from the Trade Hill area?
My grandma, I'm actually from up north, New York. My grandmother was born and raised in Richmond Hill.
Okay.
And moved to Savannah, so my roots are all through here.
Yeah.
So all the cooking that she learned as a child, we learned.
So this is, this is a startup business where you, you're just starting it up?
This is a startup business for me.
I think your timing is right. With all that's coming to the area and, and the success of food trucks in this area, oh my God, it's just booming right now. Your timing is right. Mr. Rickson, did we send, I'm coming to you, did we send notices out to the adjacent property owners that within the two and three?
Normal letter to send out to everybody. We had a public hearing at the planning commission and we've had no objections.
Objection. All right, all right. Commissioner Stevens, what you got to say?
I just got one question to ask. As you mentioned everything, how about some oxtail?
That's definitely on the menu. That is definitely on the menu.
No, what, what I was looking forward to, what, what time would you open during the, during the daytime, like during the weekdays?
Well, with me being a, right now, former, I am a worker of Hugo Boss Warehouse. I'm familiar with the hunger and the time that you have to eat. So we have lunch. I'm second shift. There's two shifts, three, two different buildings. I'm second shift. I work three forty-five to eleven thirty-five. So we usually have lunch at nine o'clock, which majority of stores are closed. We really have no time to go all the way down to McDonald's and we don't have that much to eat. So using that experience, basically, it, it's, it's just from the experience of me and my coworkers to make it easier, as well as the other warehouses that are all surrounding Midway.
Oh, yeah, okay. No, I, I was taking a shot at Commissioner Stevens down there. My co-commissioner, he's not here today, but we, we ride around in that, in that area. We usually get out of Heinzville around eight o'clock and I was just wondering if you was going to, you say you'd be open around eleven? I guess we could leave a little later.
We will be there. We will be open from ten thirty.
Oh, yeah, that's a good time.
To nine thirty.
Good.
Our lunch in Hugo Boss is over at nine thirty.
Good, yeah. I guess may it be going a little more often.
Ms. Smith, when you see them, those two come up, charge them double.
Well, I was hoping that you was going to open up a tab. We just put it on your tab.
Now, you heard us giving Mr. Rickerson his accolades a minute ago, but obviously he didn't tell you to bring samples for us. You start naming out those good foods. Our taste buds started to tingle.
Once business is open, who knows?
Thank you so much. Yes, sir. You can be seated.
Chair, I make a motion that we follow the recommendation of LCPC and granting this young lady her opportunity to start her business in life.
Second.
Motion and second, we approve LCPC's recommendation from Ms. Asia Smith and Frank's Table.
Mr. Frank's Table.
Mr. Frank's Table. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. Motion's approved. When do you plan to get started? I'm putting you on the spot.
We still have the.
I'm not rushing, just, just, just curious.
Hopefully by February.
Some more things to do. Okay. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Jeff, just some information. Come on, Joe. Jeff, just some information, come on, Joe. So the city of Heinzville, they have to have, I know they have to have a commissary too in the city of Heinzville, so how do they get around that?
They have a food truck ordinance, and they allow, they allow for commissaries to be located in residential areas, any single-family residential area.
Okay, that's the, that's the difference. Okay, okay. All right, thanks, sir.
Okay.
All right, sir.
Good evening, sir. Before you, just a couple of things real quickly. The Agreement for Administration of Liberty County Conservation and Green Space Services. As you know, for some time, the, uh, Georgia Alabama Land Trust has been inspecting those properties for us, and this is simply a renewal of that contract, uh, to be able to do those site visits for the same amount that it's been since inception, as a matter of fact. And this is, this is a budget item for this year.
It hasn't changed?
No, ma'am.
They're agreeing to do it for the...
It's $10,000 per year. That's two site visits with report.
They do a great job for us.
They do.
All right, Chairman, ten motion.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the, um, agreement to administer with the Liberty County Conservative and Green Space Program.
Is second to the motion?
Second.
Motion's second. We approve the agreement as presented. There's no changes. They've been doing a good job. We're happy to continue. Any further discussion? All in favor, show your hands, please. It's approved, sir.
Thank you, sir. And the, um, next thing for you is a renewal also. This is a right-of-entry agreement. You may remember at the old airport, we have sectored out three parcels out there. One for, uh, Canoeche EMC, one for Georgia Power, and then one for Liberty County and our staging services. And this is part of the continued Georgia Power, just renewal right-of-entry for emergency service preparation and recovery if needed. It hasn't changed either. It's a no-cost, uh, type agreement if needed. And on the back there, I did, uh, give you an attachment or attached to it, shows you the breakouts.
I worry each one would be stationed, located?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Chairman, ten motion.
Ms. Chairman, I, uh, make a motion that we approve the right of entry agreement of Georgia Power.
Second.
Motion's second. We approve the right-of-entry agreement with Georgia Power, as we have done in previous years. Thankful that we haven't had to use that service, pray that 24 will bring more of that to you. All in favor, show your hands, please. Motion's approved. Minutes of update, sir?
I'm gonna yield to Mr. Mosley for the first three, that's okay.
Yes, quite all right.
Miss Chair and Board of Commissioners, updates, uh, our impact fees. We kicked that session off, um, last month. Our consultant met, uh, via virtual with the affected departments that will be looking at impact fees for. Provide the information that they would like to do the research, and so they're in the research phase right now. They will be planning to do a, uh, public hearing and making a presentation to the board in the near future. In terms of our service fees, we're about to complete that, and we'll be, uh, meeting with the county manager and the building official to go over that, uh, draft, and then we wanna try to present that to you guys in the forthcoming weeks. So y'all get an idea to look at it, and then hopefully we can adopt it in, in, in February.
Good, good.
And our next, last presentation is our youth updates. You'll see this from the PowerPoint. We revamped the, the program in terms of how we were, uh, doing the youth program, uh, back in July and August. We developed a theme for this year is sale, scholarship, advocacy, leadership, and empowerment. And if we develop our courses along those lines, scholarship, talking about government and the things that affect government, and why, why we have government, advocacy, that they are advocates for other youth, and they are to be advocates for other youth. We wanna encourage that. The L is leadership, and then the E is, uh, for empowerment. We developed a scheduled meeting dates and other events, and we met with both the students and their parents, and talked about our expectations and things that we wanted to do, um, for the forthcoming year. They were sworn in by this body in early September of 2023. Uh, we've already went through, uh, teaching them on parliamentary procedure, and we had the election of officers. Uh, we've taught, of course, several lessons in that sale concept. Uh, the students, uh, held elections, they voted for officers, uh, they designed their own logo. And so, uh, you'll notice the little logo there on the PowerPoint, that is a logo that they, um, uh, voted on. And they have been involved in four community service projects. They, uh, worked with a fall festival with Fellowship of Love. Uh, they did a recycle's day with Keep Liberty Beautiful. Uh, they purchased some clothes for a young man, uh, in the foster program. And they also participated in the Heinzville Parade, Downtown Christmas Parade. Our future focus will continue to work on the, uh, sale, uh, theme, uh, for the remainder of the year. And we'll participate in, in the next two months, because we are gearing up to go to Atlanta. We are focusing in on government. We'll talk a lot about government and also advocacy, 'cause those are the things that you guys do as, as a government, and how you impact and affect the government. Uh, we're scheduled to meet with, uh, Representative Al Williams, as well as some ACCG legislative staff, on, um, Wednesday, uh, um, February 21st, uh, in Atlanta. And also, we've been participating, we've been asked to participate via, um, Commissioner Frazier. We've been asked to participate with the Fulton County Youth Commission, so we wanna go in, as they're being sworn in on that morning. So we wanna kinda have a full day there, uh, in Atlanta. And, um, we've been also asked to, to participate with the ACCG Spring Conference. So those are some things that we wanna do, and we're looking forward to having a good year. And, uh, we seem to have a great group of young people that are very excited about being part of the commission. Uh, these are the officers. Ms. Kyla Mack is the chairperson. Uh, the vice chair is Ms. Jada Cunningham, secretary, Ms. DeAngenee Olson, treasurer, Mr., Ms. Aleah Doohard, and our historian is Mr. Caden Polite. And again, it's a group of wonderful young people. That concludes my report, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just a couple other things, if you will. We talked last month about a commission planning session date. I look back, last year, the planning, or the Board of Commissioners, uh, met actually on March 31st. So I wanted to see if you could check your calendars while we're here, if you don't mind, and let's see if we can pick a date, maybe towards the end of March. I know we normally do it towards the end of the week, maybe 27th, 28th, 29th, didn't know what everybody looked like. And that necessarily happens to be the end of that week.
You said March?
Yes, sir. While you're looking at too, just to, we've got a list of things we're working on for the coming year. And, uh, of course, we'll talk about a lot of those at the planning session. Something that is, um, going pretty quickly now because of renewal dates and everything, is we are taking a look at our health insurance this year. Uh, and we will be taking a look at all lines of insurance again next year. Uh, our health insurance renewal date is actually, uh, June 1st. And so, uh, got some folks looking at that, uh, primary focus on family healthcare, uh, for family members, as well as userability of the systems and some of the drug costs that's going on. So we're, we are looking into that, wanted you to know that. Uh, you also got a notice too, that we had a Board of Assessor member who unfortunately had to step down because of business concerns, so that ad's running in the paper. Uh, it'll be to fill the unexpired term for one year, uh, for that position. And then we're also, at your February meeting coming up, you'll be setting qualifying fees, uh, for, for the next election cycle. And Commissioner Giger will try to hold those down for you, uh, to make sure they're okay. They're built off of salary levels, but you'll be setting yours, as well as the constitutional officers that'll be running in that term, along with Board of Education members to do that. Just a few, a few of the things that we're working on, I'm sorry.
Just the, uh, assessors boards running, how about the election? Is that one running too?
I'm not sure if it's running right now or not. I can double-check.
The other lady resigned?
Oh, yes, yes.
So they're both running this month?
Yes, 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 ma'am, they are.
What do we, what kind of time, when do we get, remind me? What kind of time, when do we get for applications to come in generally?
Generally, it's at least two weeks, sometimes three weeks, just depends. We're trying to go ahead and get that one established and, um, actually get the committee to come together if they can, so that during your mid-month meeting this month, you'd be able to find a replacement for that Board of Assessor member. I'd have to check on the deadline for the other one.
Are those ads also on our website?
They are.
Yeah?
Yes, sir. And the applications are on there too.
And these bows operate, uh, with the absence of that one, those one person on both bows?
Yes, sir. They just don't need to go on for a long time.
No.
I mean, we, we, those are two critical ones that we wanna try to fill as quickly as we can.
Maria sent out a, um, an email today about that.
Right.
The assessors board. Now, Mr. Hodges will be in until the end of the month.
Until the end of, of January, that's correct. Yes, sir.
Going back to the, uh, planning session, how, you said, how about the week before that? That's like, that Friday's Good Friday.
I was just looking at that.
That is Good Friday. Sure. I mean, you got your Board of Commissioner meeting on the 21st, I mean, yes, on the 21st and the 22nd, you could do it, if you wanna try to do that. Or, or even the 20th. I mean, you could do it anytime that week.
Mr. Brown, Chairman.
In March?
I noticed that.
Yeah.
I think last year, or year before last, we, there was a lot of things on the table. And it seemed like we kinda rushed through it. And, uh, I'm just saying maybe day and a half.
Or either two half-days.
Or whichever, but just rushed through it, and we need to be...
And I agree, it does seem like we brushed through the last couple of hours. And, you know, we don't, I don't think we give it the full attention that it should be.
Okay.
On each item, so...
Either we could do two half-days, or we could, uh, prioritize the agenda.
Yeah.
What's, what's... What's the consensus? I mean, I could go either way.
I think, uh, last year, didn't, didn't we do it two days?
We ended up just doing it one day.
We crammed it all in.
Oh, we planned to do it for two days, wasn't it?
I think you had talked about doing two separate days, two separate days.
But it seems like af, after lunch, then it, we seem to not give as much time as we need to, I think.
You try two half-days.
Two halves? Yeah. Have you, um, those dates, there's, Commissioner Jones, is that, have you checked your schedule, or you don't know?
Haven't, 'cause it's so far out.
Yeah.
But I will, we definitely will.
Yeah, I like the two half-days, and I guess, um, you know, we make sure that we, you know, we, we could talk about a lot of stuff, but the stuff that we really need to put on it, we put some, some meat and potatoes, and kinda saved a cake and ice cream for a later date.
So you wanna check his schedule for the week of the 18th, is what you're saying?
We can. You're trying, you wanna focus, um, I don't know how varieties are with you. You, you wanna try to focus on like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? Let, let me just check his schedule. I know Thursday would be out, 'cause we got a board meeting.
Yeah.
Right.
So let me check his other dates.
Okay. Even, even the beginning of the next week too, if we have to.
Now, the 28th of the next week is, uh, no good for me.
We'll try, we'll try the week of the 18th, and then if necessary, the 25th.
18th of March?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's like Saint Patrick's Day, isn't it?
And that, that'd be great, and then I, I can, I'll get back with y'all. As soon as I find out.
Mr. Brown, will you continue to check on that, um, red light there, airport?
I will. I was looking back on that today, right. I wanna see if they finish their traffic study yet.
Okay.
The G-DOT's finished it, right. Got it. And I'll check on that right away, piece to you, to you. I was trying to let the holiday go by. So I'm gonna check it out right away tomorrow.
Yo, do we, um, I mean, do you have some things that, that, that you wanted to put on the agenda?
For the planning session?
Yeah.
I do. I have a list running. It's basically stuff y'all have talked about.
Okay.
Before. But if y'all will be so kind as you always, was to send me stuff there, and then I'll try to, I'll, we will wrap those up prior to March, so we can get all the material together and put them in the books.
Yeah, I guess if you, the stuff that you had on there, if you could kinda send us that, so that, that jog our memory. And then, uh, and if, um, it may be something that we, that I may have, that, that you already got on the list from the last time.
Right.
But it, but if not, then, um, you know, I think it, um, if all of us could, you know, put, find our top issue, and maybe put that on there, and, um, I mean, you know, 'cause we all got a bunch of stuff that we would like to see, but we, we can't do it in two half-days. But if the things that's most important to us, if we can add that in there, along with what you got, so if you could get that out, I think that'd be a, a good starting point. And if, um, if any of us has something that, you know, that we really wanna see us get to work on, I think we can put that on there too.
Yeah, hard as it, hard as it is to believe, um, in 24 and the fourth quarter or before, you'll start trying to do, um, T-Splash or no, 'cause you'll have to vote on T-Splash in May of 25. And so you'll need to get your, your ballot material finished, really by September, six months ahead of time, so you can start your, your tracking on it.
So we have to do the whole, um, what do you call it, the whole regiment, then of...
Meeting with the cities and...
All that.
Yes, sir.
Getting it ready for?
Yes, sir.
So actually, you need to back into it.
You will. It's gonna have to be finished by, it needs to be finished by September of 24.
Ms. Chair, just one question. How, how about lost?
We just did...
Well, lost, we don't vote on.
With the census. Right, it was a census partner.
Right.
Yeah.
So we just, we just did census, lost thing.
Right.
Well, yeah, yeah, we had a loss renewals done in, yeah, you're talking about as far as, yeah, as far as renegotiation. It, yeah, it was done in 21, right?
So, and that's good for...
It's, it's good until the next census count, by, by mandatory, unless the agencies wanna come back together and do something different, but it's...
And hopefully, yeah, but there we go.
We've seen, right there.
Give us a little quick brief update on the fire station.
Okay. Uh, fire station, we got a meeting tomorrow. They have finished most of the paving around there, some of, in fact, in the front area, the, uh, transition strip between the highway and all is the next thing they're gonna do, and that'll taper back in. They will probably start a punch list first part of February, could be my guess. There's some sub-stuff that's still gotta be done in there. They're waiting on permanent power to the building.
Are we looking at around March, around March?
You're probably looking at the earliest end of February, but probably March, probably March. And I talked to, um, the engineer, he's coming back over the list of things, but about going in and help us with some design on some pickleball courts, uh, the locations we talked about. One, one here in Heinzville and one on the side.
Thank you.
And game's supposed to start at the Sam Harris Gym, I think on January 6th, they told me.
Yeah.
How did it, yeah, just there?
Yeah.
And that, it's been in, it's been in use.
Yeah.
It has, it has.
Guess while you're there, sir, you, you're not chatting about, but, uh, uh, the freight connector, where, where that is, 'cause I'm, I get asked about that sometimes.
Freight connector is still awaiting federal budget. We've got earmarks that have passed both House and Senate Subcommittee of Transportation, and both of them have recommended funding for that. The funding's associated with utility relocation, a little over two and a half million dollars on that project. So as soon as the, as soon as the feds...
Get back in DC and...
That's right.
Take action.
Come together on a budget, then hopefully that'll, that'll come out, but it's sitting, sitting very good right now, sitting where it needs to be.
Chair, Mr. Brown, on 119, where in that, the bi, the bypasses, are there any additional work going to be done to 119 for widening?
Well, you know, it's already had the two-foot pavement extensions done on it sometime back.
But it's still gonna stay a two-lane?
It's still gonna stay, stay a two-lane for right now, 'cause it's a state route.
But I've asked the state to keep it on their radar. Wish, they do, to keep it on their radar, because I think it needs a passing lane too.
It needs a passing lane.
It does, it definitely does.
So the sample, we talked about that, so they, they know that we are... Requesting that, but we're trying to prioritize our request so that we don't bump some other stuff, you know, for that. But, but I'm like you, that rule can't remain the same.
It cannot. I mean...
It can't remain the same. We put that in their ear, that...
Unfortunately, when G-DOT, when, when you request projects from G-DOT, they're going to do traffic counts based on, they're going to approve based on current volumes, not on projected volumes.
Right.
And so, you know, we have to bang the drum, and, and the volumes do have to pick up. And so, you know, we have to bang the drum and, and the volumes do have to pick up unfortunately, to have the need.
Next year, I hope that we'll have the opportunity to sit down and meet with our representatives before time for them to go.
Yeah.
Back in session. So that's something that we need to. We did it years ago and got away and, yeah.
But I do have a list and we got a work plan that'll be part of what you'll see on the planning session too. I'll be glad to send that out.
Alright, okay.
Be a busy year.
Now, and I do recall, since you mentioned T-Splats, we're all supposed to get with Samantha at our earliest convenience to look at where we are.
Right.
With our respect for T-Splats budgets. Then I guess it's not a bad idea to start brainstorming now for future T-Splats.
Absolutely, yeah, that's what I'm saying, you're going to need to have a potential, you know, you, you, it's the same splotch, it's same splotch, if you remember. So you'll call the meeting with the cities, you'll, you'll develop your own list among your commission. Cities will develop those lists, they'll come back to you with a final approved list, which, you know, may include some county-wide type projects. County-wide being those intersection improvement projects and safety projects and things like that that, that help, but yes, sir.
When will you, Samantha start looking at projections, income projections from T-Splats?
We'll do that before we have a meeting with the cities, so that you've got that.
And some of those people, it's a learning curve, because Heinzville has a new mayor, so we're all five of you. So you got to bring those people up to par on how this works.
We'll go through, we'll go through the legal side, that's part of that first briefing. You know, just going to go back to square one briefly and talk about the, the Georgia code and what's required and reporting requirements and a lot of things. And encourage your staff to be there too.
And with you saying that, it was, in talking with Jeff earlier. The city of Gumbrunch, you know, they're getting a new mayor. But anyway, she told me she had gotten an invite from his office to come in, and it may have been for all the mayors, but, you know, to come in and they gave her, gave her an overview of what to expect. You know, it, it, it'd be a lot for her to learn, like it is for us, but anyway, that they bring her in and give her a heads up on everything that they do over there. And they may have did it for all the other.
Good to have somebody at the table from Gumbrunch.
Yes, sir, I believe she will be. Hoping she'll be there.
That's all I ask, sir.
Alright, sir.
Alright.
Anything else to go to?
No, I had the over and under at six fifty, so I think. I took the under.
I didn't hear nobody say, go dogs. Orange Bowl.
Oh, yeah, they did.
I think all of us in this room could have beat Florida State.
On that night anyway.
And y'all know that Tremell Walter has entered himself into the NFL draft, you know, young man from, from Georgia. So we wish him well.
Wish him well.
Alright, Chair, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Submove, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor?
Second.
Thank you.